Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February 22, 2022, and the time is 5:31 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. There is a quorum present, so I call the meeting to order. We will be convening into work session in the first-floor conference room, and the public is welcome to attend.
So you made the eight-year-old is happy, so maybe the one of 12 people excited. Depends on how you look at it.
Would you like another piece of silverware?
I agree.
I'll get some.
Actually, I think the amount of people that are going to drive across Beltline to go to that station is going to be huge.
Don't thank you.
Yes, sir.
May have received a salary.
Hold it. I'm gonna confess. I love how you looked at me. Wait, who's your partner in crime? Buddy?
What are you doing?
It was too good. I could not do it.
Wow. Kevin? I had to watch out for you. Because apparently he looks straight at me.
I've been playing the long game with sending him to that storefront. Yeah.
All right. Let's go ahead and get started. The time is 5:34. We're convening into work session. We only have two items on the agenda. The first one is discussion of agenda items. Does anybody have anything that they would like to ask or talk about?
Yeah, we're gonna ask that Kim and her team do a presentation of the audit during work session.
All right. Kim, do you have anything to say early about that?
I do. Well, not. I just want to introduce John DeBarrow. He's the audit partner for Weaver, who conducted the audit, and he has a presentation after the fact to make to you.
So, John, is it? Well, I haven't read it yet, but is it usually, is it like boring with great?
It went great.
Okay, good.
And I want to take him away.
Right from the root of it.
If I could introduce. Mary Henry is our chief accountant, and U.A. is our staff accountant. And then Vanessa Tarver is our controller, and they are really responsible for the audit, them and a few others. But I just wanted to recognize them.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody have any questions for Kim on the audit?
She is gonna be the president. I'm talking about the council. I'm talking about the agenda.
Thank you.
Have your hats on. There you go.
Thank you.
Are you good? Oh, well.
John, I got you. No, no, you're good.
Thank you.
Mary. Oh, Vanessa.
It sure is less like painted, though.
If I get hurt, I sue you all.
That's how you rehab your shoulder right there, yeah?
There you go.
Does anybody?
No, just follow along.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to be with you this evening. I'm John DeBarrow. I'm the audit partner with Weaver, and I'd like to present the results of the fiscal year 2021 audit to you this evening. And before I do so, I'd like to thank Kim and all the rest of the staff for all their hard work, who made it a very successful audit. And I have a presentation that you have in front of you that we call Weaver Reviews, and it goes through a number of things. It goes through an introduction to both the audit process in our firm, goes through the audit results, the audit process, some of our required communications, and then some financial highlights that have derived directly from both this year's and prior year's financial statements. And if anyone has any questions throughout the presentation, please feel free to ask away. Kind of thumbing through the slides, the third one shows that I served as the audit partner this year, and I was assisted by Claire Wood, one of our senior managers. We led the audit. Turning forward to the engagement team on page four. Claire and I were joined by Capella's own Drew Hansen. He was the senior associate that ran the day-to-day fieldwork, and Alyssa Carnes, one of our associates. Turning forward to the audit results on slide six. This gives you a snapshot of the results of the audit, which, as I mentioned, were very successful. We've issued three reports based on our audit procedure. The first one is our independent auditors' report, and we've issued that on your financial statements, where we issue an unmodified opinion, which means that we feel that the financial statements for the year ended September 30, 2021, are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. The second report that we've issued is our independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. And in that report, we're required to list out any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, if there were any, and I'm happy to report that there were no such controlled efficiencies noted, no non-compliance events being reported either. And the final report that we've issued is our independent auditors' report on compliance for each major program and our report on internal control of compliance in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. What that is, is it's our report on your federal financial assistance programs. And in that report, we've given an unmodified opinion, which means that we feel that the city complied in all material respect in its handling of all the federal financial assistance programs, and there were no findings, which means that there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls over compliance. So, very, very clean audit. Turning forward to the audit process on page eight, or slide eight. I like to begin with this slide because it lets you know that we're not just your audit firm for a day or a week, but throughout the year. And that's not a bad thing to have the auditors available. Because we, I like to make myself and my staff available to Kim and her staff because a lot of times, if you have transactions that may be new and you're not certain how to record them, I like to know that they have us at a resource at any time during the year to, you know, go through that thought process and make sure that the transactions are properly recorded. So, we started our audit back last summer in the planning stage and performed interim fieldwork, which I'll elaborate on in just a moment. We came back in January to perform our final fieldwork, met with the audit committee last week, and issued our opinion on the financial statements last week as well. The audit process itself, on page nine, we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, generally accepted government auditing standards, and the Uniform Guidance that governs the handling of federal financial assistance programs. And we do so using a risk-based approach, which means that we can't audit all of your transactions for the entire year. So, we use a risk-based approach to look at areas that are of higher risk with material misstatement by tailoring our resources a little bit more heavily in those areas. And we've listed out some of those for you. Things like revenue recognition and the related receivables, capital projects and things that go along with that, such as purchasing and complying with bidding procedures, payables and accrued liabilities, expenditures of federal awards and compliance for those grants. And this year, we still looked at the effects of COVID-19 and what it would do to our expectations as far as analytics. On slide 10, this goes through the audit process. I mentioned that we performed interim procedures last summer during August. And because the fiscal year books aren't closed yet, we tried to focus our attention on internal controls. So, we perform what are called walkthroughs of the city's significant accounting transaction cycles, things such as cash disbursements, cash receipts, payroll. And we get an understanding of the processes, then we identify controls, and then we take transactions and walk through those transactions to make sure that the controls are in place as have been described to us. And I'm happy to report that we were able to walk through those controls, and there were no noted control deficiencies. We performed testing of compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act, control testing over cash disbursements and payroll, looking at samples of each. When we came back in January to perform our final fieldwork, we used a variety of techniques in testing the city's balances as well as the activity for the year. So, we'll perform analytics, we'll sample some transactions and others, we'll look at significant transactions, significant transactions, and vouch them to the source documentation. We identified the city's major federal financial assistance programs as well. And this year, you had two federal financial assistance programs that required auditing the Coronavirus Relief Fund and the American Recovery Plan Act, which is also known as the coronavirus state fiscal recovery program. We tested the account balances and the year activity, as I mentioned, using various techniques, and evaluated various estimates that are embodied in the financial statements for reasonable and felt that they were all reasonable in relation to the financial statements as a whole. The next section of the presentation goes through our required communications with those charged with governance. And I won't read these word for word, but if you have questions about something in here, please let me know. Slide 13 begins by going through our responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standards, which, really to paraphrase, are that we're required to express an opinion on the city's financial statements based on our audit procedures. And as I mentioned, we've issued an unmodified opinion. On slide 14, these are our responsibilities under generally accepted government auditing standards. In addition to those responsibilities that I just mentioned, we also have to issue a written report on our consideration of the city's internal control over financial reporting and compliance. And in that report, I'm happy to report that there were no findings. And the last set of responsibilities we have is under the Uniform Guidance, and that's to express an opinion on the city's handling of its federal financial assistance programs based on our audit procedures, and we issued an unmodified opinion there as well. Turning ahead to slide 16. We're required to communicate to you any unusual transactions or the adoption of new accounting standards. There were no unusual transactions noted during our audit, and the city did adopt GAZB statement number 84 that was required to be implemented this year entitled fiduciary activities. And this just establishes criteria for the reporting of fiduciary activities. And there's more information on that in the 15 of the financial statements. Turning to slide 17. In our audit, we noted no indication of any material errors or regularities or fraud. There were no material weaknesses. As I mentioned, we reviewed various estimates that are embodied in the financial statements and felt that there were reasonable basis for each one. On slide 16, as I've mentioned, it was very clean audit. We encountered no difficulties whatsoever. We received nothing but full cooperation from all the finance staff. There were no independence issues. And in the area of audit adjustments, we're required to communicate to you any material or significant audit adjustments that were made as a result of our audit procedures to arrive at the numbers in the financial statements, as well as any, what are called, uncorrected misstatements that are ones that weren't material, but we decided to pass on. And I'm happy to report that there were none of either categories. And finally, in the financial highlight section of the presentation, again, these numbers are derived directly from this year's annual comprehensive financial report and prior years. And it begins on slide 20. The first two slides talk about the general fund revenues, which totaled $80.1 million during fiscal year 2021. That was a $9.3 million increase over the prior year. And most of that was in the area of sales and mixed beverage taxes that increased by $5 million, and intergovernmental revenues increased by 3.1. That was primarily the federal financial assistance that was received by the city. And if you turn to slide 21, you can see the numbers that I just presented to you. The intergovernmental revenues increasing from 0.6 million in fiscal '20 to 3.7 million this past year, while the sales and mixed beverage taxes, right next to it, increased from 20.7 million to 25.7. And if we turn to slide 22, the next two slides will provide a similar comparison of general fund expenditures for the past two years. The general fund expenditures in fiscal '21 totaled $56.3 million, and that was a $1.9 million decrease over the previous year. There were three areas, three functional areas of expenditures that netted to that amount. The capital outlay expenditures this year decreased by 2.2 million. General government expenditures increased by 1.1, and public safety decreased by 23. And again, on slide 23, you'll know that the changes from year to year, general government going from 11.2 to 12.3, public safety decreasing from 25.5 to 24.7, and capital outlay decreasing from 3.5 to 1.3 million. Slide 24 talks about the fund balance of the city, which totaled, for the general fund, totaled $108.6 million this past year. General fund fund balance increased by $21.5 million during fiscal '21, partially due to the increase in the revenues that I described just a few minutes ago. And on a signed fund balance in the general fund represents 157% of the general fund expenditures, which is very healthy. And finally, two more financial comparison slides. On slide 25, this takes a look at your general fund budget versus actual performance for fiscal '21. And overall, the city had a favorable budgetary variance of $12.1 million. And most of that is comprised by two things. The revenues for the city, for the general fund, were $2.4 million more than budgeted, while expenditures were under budget by $10.5 million in cost savings that were experienced. And finally, on slide 26, if you take a look at the water and sewer fund during fiscal '21, net position was pretty flat. It increased by $95,000 in fiscal '21. That was about $1 million less than the increase in net position from the previous year. Operating revenues increased by $1.2 million this year due to increased consumption as well as rate increases, while net non-operating expenses increased by $1.8 million due to the disposal of capital assets. And the last thing I just want to mention, too, is that GAZB, our friends that put together pronouncements for governments, is very busy. And next year is time for the new lease standard, GAZB 87, or leases. It's going to require leases to be reported on the financial statements for the first time. And for-profit entities have a similar announcement that they're implementing as well. But I know that Kim and her staff are already well-versed in this, and I'm confident that they'll make the transition just fine, and we'll be there to help. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? Crowd silent.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, like you said, he'll be, you know, it doesn't have to be denied. He can answer questions at any time. Kim can answer any time more often.
Yes. On the final slide, my contact information's on that final slide. So, if anyone has questions after this meeting, feel free to reach out. I'd be happy to answer any questions here anyhow.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He will be making a presentation in the big room as well.
Yes. Oh. That was the original question.
Just on the Sherwood Park, are we all set?
I'm sorry.
Sherwood Park? Sherwood Park.
Oh, Sherwood Park, yes. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear you yet. As far as I know, we are. I'm looking. I know it's hard for y'all to hear back there. He's just asking, is everything good with Sherwood Park? Does it continue to move forward?
It is moving.
No. Behind you. Mindy.
I'm so sorry. Yes, it is moving forward. They plan to submit the March, submit date, which means they will go to FNC in April, and then the financial council will meet.
Okay. So, anybody have questions about item number 11? Bob, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I'll just do a short presentation with regard to that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if anyone wants to now.
Who's doing that now? Sorry.
He asked if there anybody had any questions on item number 11, which is the code of conduct.
We want to talk about during regular session, right?
Okay.
If you had any questions, he's available.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Going to the next. Yeah. Item B. This is something that we did back when COVID started, and the town center was actually shut down to the public. Previously, citizens' appearances had been made in person. And it's in our charter that, you know, the governance, how long they can talk, what they can say, what they can't say. When town center closed, the council agreed to let people submit comments in writing, and the city secretary would read them into the record. And that was effective while we were closed to the public. Now, we're back open, and there, this was a, it was a courtesy that we granted our citizens. But to me, the citizens' appearance is for them to come have a democratic, be part of the democratic process, and come and talk publicly. We've had a couple of things that have happened on some of the submittals. There's been a couple of them that have been excessively long. They were very long. They would have taken probably 15 to 20 minutes to read into the record. And I had instructed Ashley that if the item came up, and it turned out the submitter retracted it, that she was to read the cover page and then give us all the paper copies of the rest of it. That brought in the case that I might be unduly censoring the report by doing that. The other thing is, it puts Ashley, or whoever's reading the content into the public record, into a really uncomfortable position that if they, if something is submitted that is objectionable or not correct, we don't have a way of removing that. And it's, it could put us in a bad situation. So, I'm, I wanted a discussion on it. My recommendation is that we go back. And by the way, we've always, if anybody sends in a written comment, we all get a paper copy of that. If they send it into Ashley, you will get a paper copy of it. And so, I'm not, I'm not even suggesting that we change that. That needs to continue. But I would like to see that the citizens' comments section be made in person and orally. Mark?
When you said you're concerned about there being something objectionable or incorrect, how is that different than them being in the room and stating something that is incorrect?
I have the ability to ask them to refrain from saying things that are objectionable. Oh, gosh.
Even like personal attack type of thing?
Personal attacks, yes. Exactly. Bob?
Yeah. Ma'am, counsel, not only here, but Ashley's received some of these over the last 24 months. And not only here, but other places that I work. And the mayor, or the city secretary, whoever reads them, is put in a position of maybe having to filter what's in the report because of its length, of its tone. And it puts, it puts her and/or him or me in a position to be an editor, and I'm not the editor. And so, and it was done as an accommodation for COVID. Obviously, the citizens have a right to write you all the time and send you whatever emails, and send them to staff, and then we'll forward them to you. But we didn't want, and I didn't want to get in a position of suggesting the mayor and the city secretary that they would have to edit that, those comments. And so, the whole idea is for them to come down here and see you and address you all as a group instead of sending. And we tried to accommodate everyone for COVID. Now that that's kind of over, it seems like now that I have citizens coming, and then I've got some that are reading them, and it just puts the mayor and/or the city secretary in a really nonintenable situation.
I definitely understand the, you know, not wanting to put staff in a position where they're, they feel compelled to editors. We definitely don't want to do that and be accused of putting words in people's mouths. Completely understand that. I would say, though, that, I mean, to this day, that there are still people that are immunocompromised, that don't feel comfortable coming out. So, I'm hesitant to completely just remove that. What I might suggest, though, is there was a way that maybe they appear on Zoom during citizens' comments, so that way, the tone and intent and everything could be upheld. I don't know how that falls with, you know, with like appearance, but I would suggest, at least for now, until, I do want to be careful about throwing around COVID is over completely because there are some people that still have concerns and stuff. So, want to be respectful of those citizens. But also, I think it's still important to make sure that we give all citizens a voice. And if they don't feel comfortable coming in, I feel like Zoom might be an acceptable compromise until we, you know, until things move forward in a way that we require in person. But you still get that tone and the intent without staff having to put words in people's mouths.
I know that we were doing Zoom during COVID. Is the capability still there?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Would that also include public carings that are required under state law or under ordinance? I'm just asking.
I didn't understand your question.
There are certain things that are required by state law. It's public carrying, and so, those public carings have been accommodated where the people come down here and give testimony on an item that's on the agenda. Are you going to extend that? You take five out of the charter. It could be an issue if someone gets to appear or not appear and give that testimony because they're supposed to be in the room and give the testimony at a public hearing, which means the rest of the people that are here get to see and record, etc.
Cliff?
Would the time limits still apply?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a time limit on the public hearings?
We do.
Five minutes?
That's correct. Mark?
I want to make government as accessible to people as possible. If we need to put something on the website where, that tells them, if you want it read into the record, keep in mind it's, needs to stay in there two minutes. And then put that statement that you read every time before public appearance right there below it. So it's crystal clear and, you know, say that it will be rejected if it's, you know, if there are personal attacks. It will not be read. But I, I'm all for it. You know, people have busy lives, they have kids and, you know, that's, that's no reason they shouldn't be able to participate in government. I mean, I pushed, you know, ever since I, when I first got on, on the council to have these work sessions streamed so people could, you know, readily see the discussion that takes place back here because that's very important. But, you know, it comes so early that it's, it's, it's hard for a lot of people to, to make it here and even at 7:30, it's, it's tough.
Anybody else?
I've heard, I guess, two different things. So what are we actually discussing? Which one, which one are we discussing? To, to cut off the reading into the record? Is that the, the primary one?
Yes.
So I would be in favor of, I guess, discontinuing that also. I think the citizens' appearance, they need to represent what they're, you know, what they want to say with the, what everybody was saying about the inflection and voice and tone and everything else. I think that should be represented by the citizen. Now, the secondary one about the Zoom, I don't know if I have a strong opinion about that. My opinion is everybody ought to come and participate here. And I do question, if we make an accommodation, when is the accommodation, when is it over?
No.
Two.
If, if you want this to continue, in the unforeseen future, you need to change your rules. So that it's in your rules, so that it's not arbitrary. You did it as an accommodation for COVID. If you want to make it permanent, I would recommend you put it in rules that govern your proceedings, just like the rest of open hearings are in your rules, citizens' comments are in your rules, the time limits, the Zooming or whatever you're going to allow should be in your rules to govern your meetings. These are your, this is the council's meeting. Kim?
I personally feel that Zoom slash video conferencing is not going anywhere. I think it is now a part of our society. I think that you will have more people, you know, feeling more comfortable, you know, coming in person. I would fully support us adopting rules that allow some sort of, you know, for citizens' appearance, some sort of video conferencing or Zoom. I just think it's something that is going to continue to come up and I think all COVID did was just push adoption of that technology faster than it would have, would have done naturally. So, but as far as the original question, I would be okay with discontinuing that if the Zoom capability was put in place, just to make sure we are accommodating more people and allowing government more accessible to people.
Did you go?
So Bob, if we made a change to, to the rules, could it, could there be a sunset clause so we don't make it so difficult for future councils if they want to change their mind about that?
Yeah, I mean, if you want a trial period, we have it expire next May of the election because you have a new council here potentially, so they get to. Well, the way your rules seem, the way the charters says, City Council shall establish its rules after, within 30 days of completion of the election. So that's a good time. Traditionally, we just not change them very often, but as technology changes and, and we, we have lots of first-time council members, you know, your perspective's different than your predecessor and so you're entitled to change those rules. And so it's usually done shortly after the election. So to your point, might be a good time to just do it until the next election. And we can come up with a date. I mean, I mean to infer that no one's going to run and get beat. That's not the point. The, the point was that's a good time to revisit the rules. You may not want to run.
Thank you, man. I support Ashley. I know we have 20 minutes limit on a public hearing topics that people can make comments in any given topic, correct?
Oh, 20 minutes for citizens' appearance and then an hour for public hearings.
An hour for public hearing and 20 minutes. So if we have, I mean, citizens' appearance means they can send any issues to the council to read, right?
The 20 minutes is cumulative. So if we had 10 people show up that wanted to speak for two minutes each, that would be the cap. And same with public hearings.
Are there any limit for, for citizens' appearance? Speaking, if there are 100 people here, they want to speak same day, are there any limit?
That would be, the limit would be 20 minutes.
Okay, so then we need a limit, even if we do Zoom, how would we manage that? 20 minutes maximum.
It's already, it's already set up that each person has two minutes.
I know, I understand. So there are 50 people requested.
Right.
Send an email to us saying, read all my comments, two minutes each.
Right.
That would be 100 minutes.
Okay.
I think that's part of the rules that Bob's talking about though. Y'all, y'all would make that determination as part of those rules.
I gotta, I gotta admit, I hadn't considered the Zoom. I'm, I'm, I'm actually, that's fine. My problem is the written stuff. And the Zoom, if, you know, Zoom would be very adequate for, you know, a great way to overcome, I think it overcomes your need to be here and inconvenience of coming in person, yet you're still visible.
So how do we manage that 20 minutes in 50 people?
Well, the way that, the way that it works now would be the first 10 people that sign up.
Okay. There's also the provision that in the past where the mayors, let's say it's a large group that's shown up for a singular purpose. So the mayors in the past took, said, if you could come together, maybe have two or three people who represent the same ideology and that's been a way to address it so it condenses it down so that they don't all repeat the same.
And if you think about it, when Magnolia Park spoke, I made that comment and Mark said, I'm, I'm speaking. So that, that was what we did. I didn't know he was going to be the speaker, but that already consolidated.
Okay, so I understand first 10 people get two minutes. Who submitted their email to be ready to the record.
Not ready, I think you probably want to try to get a little.
Or they're reading.
Want to go to Zoom.
Want to go to Zoom.
Right. Then we have additional people showed up here, what do we do with them?
That's a good point.
Right.
Bob? Bob's got to answer. If you show up, you get to go first. If you're Zoom.
I want to hear that. That's what I'm looking for. I thought we answered this.
You know, we make the rules. They're your rules. It's your meeting.
And I, I would support that too, your, your first.
Because a lot of people like to, to comment and leave. They don't want to stay here the rest of the excitement. Imagine that. So, thanks for bringing up the Zoom. I didn't, I hadn't even considered that. That's a good compromise. I like that.
Yeah, I, I agree with Kevin. Go away with the reading in and allow the Zoom. We write the rules.
Our takeaway is we'll draft some of these based on what we've heard. We'll bring it to you in work session and at least then you'll have something in front of you and then you can start massaging what you think as far as this works, this doesn't work, this is what we like to see, this is what we don't like to see. Because at the end of the day, there are your, your rules.
Kevin?
Does everyone agree about the prioritization of people in person get first dibs and then if there is somebody on Zoom?
I'll write it that way. It was.
I just wanted to confirm that everyone else.
It'll be debatable when he brings the written text in.
So what does it fall, is it, is it not an ordinance? Is that what it is? It just falls under council rules or is that how legally is that what it is? It's not, so it's not even law.
We do not do.
It's an ordinance.
Oh, it is an ordinance.
I was trying to get your attention.
I thought there was something wrong with you.
It is codified. Yeah, what's not codified is some of the issues that you're addressing.
Right.
That part's fairly, is wide open.
Okay, well, which?
Citizens' comment, citizens' comment is codified.
Okay. But only to the point that we have to allow?
Correct.
Okay. How we allow?
How you allow, other than the two minutes and everything. But that's what y'all are going to discuss through the work.
So we won't be changing, we won't be modifying an ordinance? We will just be?
You could, don't have to.
Much like the policy, this was a policy decision that you went from not taking written to taking written. That was a policy decision, much like this discussion is. Okay.
And by the way, our, our ordinance is heavily reflected in Robert's rules of order. So when you get into the details of that, a lot of the language from our ordinance is from Robert's rule.
So Mark, are you thinking extending more than 20 minutes?
No, I don't think so. Just keep that in place. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's a rare occasion when you get a lot of people and then usually they come together.
Right.
And have a few people speak and then you might have one or two people walk up and say ditto, ditto, ditto.
They could have been that.
So the only thing we'd have to change, and actually it is in there, those persons who signed up to speak at citizens' appearance shall be called upon in the order that they have signed the provided register. So we would have to perhaps modify that a bit to give priority to the people that are in that person.
So we'll have this on a future work session.
Okay. Thank you. That was, that was the direction we needed. John, did you have?
No, it's good.
Kevin, were you done?
I'm happy.
Good. Okay, thanks, everybody. That is, the time is 6:05 PM and we are at the end of work session and we will be joining regular session of the city council at 7:30.
Time to get a new watch.
Oh, 6:15, I'm sorry.
New glasses.
I put some fresh lenses in.
I got those.
I said some fresh.
No, I got, I got fresh ones. I got fresh ones.
I was listening. But.
Good evening, everybody. The time is 6:00 PM and we're going to convene back into regular session of the Coppell City Council. As a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during the citizens' appearance must sign the appropriate register outside the council chambers and list their address. Tonight, for our invocation, we have Pastor Brian with the Capella Bible Fellowship here to give our invocation. And after that, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. So please remain standing. Pastor Brian?
Would you all join me in a moment of silence for the tragedy that happened in our community last week? Father God, I come before you in the name of your son, Jesus. Lord, I thank you for his sacrifice for us on the cross and his resurrection from the dead that gives us hope. I thank you that through faith in him, you give us the gift of eternal life and forgiveness, that you accept us as your children. I thank you that you hear us when we pray. Father, we come to you today still feeling the tragedy that happened in our community last Wednesday. Father, we mourn the loss of Caitlin Rogers. And we pray that you would give special attention and comfort to her family and friends and all those who are hurting from her death. We pray that you would also comfort the family and loved ones of Nicholas Twining. And we pray that you would help us as a community in Capella to come together in this time, to comfort one another and to help those who are struggling and in need around us. Father, we struggle to make sense of a tragedy like this. And it reminds us that our world is broken. We live not in the good and peaceful world that you created in the beginning, but in a world that has been devastated by our own rebellion against you. It reminds us, Father, that we need you. We need the life and salvation that comes from you. We need the hope that we have in your son. And we believe your promise and we find hope in your promise that one day you're going to redeem this world. You promise in your word that one day you will again dwell with your people on earth and that you will wipe away every tear from their eyes. There will be no more death or mourning or crying or pain because the old things have passed away. And Father, we long for that day and we find hope in that day. And I pray for those who don't have that hope, who have not yet received the life and the salvation that you give, that they would come to know your son, Jesus, and believe in him. And Father, I thank you for the leaders that you've given us in this town. And I pray that you would continue to equip them with wisdom to lead our town well and to unite us especially in a time like this. Father, we pray these things in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Tonight, we have a proclamation. And I understand some of my allies and some of my members are here with me. So I'd invite you to join me down front. I don't buy. I was trying to think of alumni and I couldn't come up with the word, so. Thank you very much. All right. Counsel for your consideration. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by people of African descent to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson initiated Black History Week. And for many years, the second week of February was chosen to celebrate the contributions and achievements of black people in the United States. And whereas in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month and is now celebrated all over North America. And whereas we celebrate the diversity of black individuals in Capella, Texas, our nation, and the black diaspora, whether they identify as African, African-American, Afro-Latino, Afro-Caribbean, or black. And whereas the Black History Month 2022 theme is black health, excuse me, black health and wellness and is set every year by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas the 2022 theme considers activities, rituals, and initiatives that black communities have done to be well, including the legacy of black soldiers, midwives, nurses, and doctors. And whereas we uplift our community leaders, black business owners, professionals, and others who promote well-being and knowledge throughout the many facets of the black community as part of our whole inclusive community. And whereas we observe the, we observe Black History Month that calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to the democratic ideals. And whereas the city of Capella continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for the contributions and political contributions to our community, the state, and the country, and the world. And whereas the city of Capella is proud to honor the history and contributions of black individuals in our community throughout our state and nation. Now therefore, I, West Mays Mayor of the city of Capella, do hereby proclaim the month of February as Black History Month. It witnessed thereof, set my hand, and caused the seal of the city of Capella to be affixed this 22nd day of February, 2022. Counsel? Mayor, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a proclamation celebrating the month of February as Black History Month and authorizing the mayor to sign.
We have a second by Councilmember Carol. All in favor?
Long and Hosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill. All in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Well, do we have anybody that wants to speak on behalf? It looks like, that's called being elected right there.
I have a couple. Well, Mayor, I wanted to thank you and the council and the members of this community for the recognition and honor bestowed here tonight. What we do here today, what you do here today is an American celebration. Recognition for the contribution made by slaves, former slaves, and their descendants. And appreciation and acknowledgement, all Americans are of value. For that, we thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you very much. Yes. Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I questioned her, but. No, I just want to say congratulations and I appreciate all the things that the past, who have done so much to make this possible, the progress that's been made. One thing that I do want to challenge you is I've been to many parades in other cities that has MLK parades, but I have not seen one here. And I thought, why not?
Challenge.
We got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Item number six is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their residence address. Each speaker must state his or her name and address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual's speaker's time may be extended for an additional two minutes upon the approval of a majority of the council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, groups, or corporation. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and break in and request to the mayor and the city council that they would like to extend the speaker's time to an additional two minutes. We do have a timer on the podium to show your time. We do have one person that signed up to speak tonight, and that's Mr. Vinky Venkateshaman.
Good evening, councilors. I'm here to speak on two issues.
Name and address, please, sir.
Oh, sorry. Venky Venkateshaman, 415 Gifford Drive, Capella. I'm here to speak on two separate issues unrelated, the STR ordinance, which is item number 10, I believe, in today's agenda, and item number 11, which is a repeal of the Code of Conduct. So at the outset, I would like to request a four-minute time to do this, my talk. And probably most of it will be on the latter issue. But I don't know, you want to do it right now or you want to do it as you go along? Okay. All right. Is it just timed or is it already two minutes over?
Oh, she's restarted.
Okay. All right. Let's start with the less controversial of the two issues. One is the short-term rental matter. The short-term rental matter, just as a history, I have been renting my place even before the term "short-term rental" came about, which was back in September of 2014. I've never had any issues with renting short-term. I think the entire matter came, became visible because one tenant, one citizen decided to make one of his homes a party home. Since then, you have a whole bunch of regulations that have come about to regulate short-term rentals. And I have reviewed the recent short-term rental document that was put out along with the, along with the agenda. And I just have a couple of things that I want to point out, which I have actually already sent a letter to the council. One is the issue regarding applying an annual independent inspection of required fire extinguishers in compliance with the current Capella Fire Code as amended. That line is not clear. It also says fire extinguishers, suppression systems, and so on have to be inspected. So I would like clarity regarding who's going to inspect it, what would be the charge. The second would be, it says, Section 99, 9-29-3B dot 9. That sentence itself is, seemed muddled up and unclear. So I need clarification. And Section 9-29-8 dot A, 1 dot C says state senior exemption or other exemption does not specify the age of a senior and what other exemptions exist. Would like to have clarity on that. And then finally, with respect to the actual hotel occupancy tax of 7% that's being charged, I am asking that, that rate be reduced to 6%. Be in line with the Texas state hotel occupancy tax. And also, wayward of the first $15 of, per night, per day of charge, because that's how the state ordinance is written. And, and that way, you get a break for the first $15 and you charge tax only for the, what's above $15. And also, finally, the, this tax is directly collected by the state. So there is no need to come every quarter to come and pay this tax along with a statement showing how much revenue was collected. So I would like the council to consider if it's feasible for the city to collect it directly from parties like Airbnb, like the state already does, so that the citizen doesn't have to produce a statement every quarter and come and pay. That's all with respect to the STR. So now I'm moving on to this Code of Conduct issue. So this Code of Conduct repeal, I need you to give some history here. And I think the city council very well knows the history for the benefit of those who are here and for the best benefit of those who are watching. This whole thing came about, it appears, because there was one whom I term a busybody, who complained about a particular Facebook group that I maintain for the last seven years. And she filed a complaint through the Code of Conduct as an ethics complaint. A special investigator was, a special counsel was appointed, investigated it, said there was no ethics violation. That should have been the end of that. But it was not. Instead, the city council chose to bring it up. Two of the city council members here, Mr. Neves and Mr. Hill, put up an item on the agenda in the last council meeting saying, discuss the removal of Venky Venkateshaman from the conduct review board. Now, I had responded to that as well by letter. That item was removed from the agenda, apparently for rethinking. And I thought that would probably be the end of that. But then there was the other thing that was brought about, which was the social media issue and the issue where the, the social media guidelines need to be changed, which also appeared to be directed towards me. And now finally, it looks like you're wanting to repeal the entire Code of Conduct, in the process, remove the entire board and in the process, remove me from the, from the, from the city council and the, from the Code of Conduct, Conduct Review Board. And I am asking that the, that the decision be deferred because it's going to be repealed without any alternative Code of Conduct being put in place. And one would think that you would want to.
I'm sorry, but your time is up?
One, I'm just concluding with that you would consider a new Code of Conduct before you repeal the existing one. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinions. Did we have anybody else sign up? Thank you. All right. Item number seven is our consent agenda. Consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the council budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Counsel, is there any item to be pulled? With none being so, we'll entertain a motion? Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number A through E on the consent agenda item.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Councilmember Carol? All in favor?
Long and Hosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill. All in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number eight is a presentation of the annual audit results. Kim Tien?
Thank you, Mayor and council. And this evening, we have John DeBros, the audit partner for Weaver, who conducted the city's audit for fiscal year ending 9/30/2021. And he'll present the results of that audit to you. I did want to take an opportunity again just to acknowledge the staff that's here with me tonight. Vanessa Tarver is our controller, Mary Haney is our chief accountant, and UA is our staff accountant. And without them, this would not be possible. It's really them and the rest of the team that do the work to make the clean audit for, for you and the rest of the community. And so with that, I'll introduce Mr. DeBros.
Thank you, Kim. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Since we have gone through the audit results in great detail in the regular session, I'd like to give you kind of a high-level overview of things. And I'd like to, first of all, once again, thank Kim and the rest of the finance staff for such a fine job in being prepared for the audit and making a big success. We conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as generally accepted government auditing standards and the uniform guidance. And at the end of the day, we were able to issue three reports on the audit results. The first is our independent auditor's report on the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2021. And we issued an unmodified opinion, which means that we feel that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. We also issued two other reports. One is our independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. And we're happy to report that there were no material weaknesses or any significant deficiencies detected during our audit. And the final report that we issued was our independent auditor's report on the compliance for each major federal program and report on internal control over compliance in accordance with the uniform guidance. And once again, I'm happy to report good results. We issued an unmodified opinion on that report, which means that we feel that the city conducted the federal financial assistance programs in accordance with the requirements. And we had no findings, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in compliance. So very, very good, clean audit. And again, a lot of credit goes to your, your people here in the finance department.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions? One of the things I appreciated is the fact that you do make yourself available to us year-round for questions later that may come up as we study the report. When I first heard an unmodified report, the words in my engineering background set off a red flag, but in, in the audit world, that's actually the best statement you can make about a, a report. Is that correct?
Yes. That, that's the highest level of assurance that we can give, that the financial statements are fairly presented. And to actually go back a few years before the unmodified opinion, it used to be called an unqualified opinion, which made it even more confusing because people thought you weren't qualified.
Well, I know, we know that our staff is very well qualified, so thank you for that endorsement. Counsel, any, any, councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John, for the presentation. I know you said we have a clean sheet of record here. I just wanted to ask you a question about the major programs that we had last year, the coronavirus relief fund, and the American Recovery Plan Act. You, so in your assessment, we distributed that fund cleanly and without any issues, correct?
Yes. There are, there are what they call compliance requirements for each one of those grants, and we have to test what are direct and material compliance requirements for each one of those federal financial assistance programs. And we, based on the testing we did, it, we felt that they handled the grant in compliance with all the requirements.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time tonight, and we certainly appreciate hearing the, the results of the audit. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
So item number nine is a public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing and ask Chief Barton to come forth and read the item into the, I'll do that for you. Consider approval of an ordinance of the city of Capel, Texas, re-adopting and ratifying, republishing, and extending the Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordinances, Article 9-17, curfew hour for minors for a period of three years, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for reading that. Counsel, I was all prepared to read that, too. So the reason we're here tonight about-
Well, now, I'll keep you up on that one next time around.
Okay, okay. I'll be prepared. All right. So the reason we're here tonight about the curfew ordinance is the Texas Local Government Code 370.002 requires that the city council re-adopt, modify, or abolish a curfew ordinance every, every three years. Capel first adopted our curfew ordinance in 2000, and every three years, we have re-adopted it, I believe, without any modifications. I feel like this ordinance is a common sense ordinance. It's, it keeps our minor safe. And the reason I say common sense is, yes, I'm about to show you the, the hours that are in violation, but the common sense part is if, if the minor is at work, or he's going to work, or coming home from work, or going to church, or going to a church function, to or from, any city of Capel events, school-related events, any civic organizations. I mean, there's a lot of exceptions to this rule. So a minor that's just caught, or I shouldn't say caught, that's a terrible word, contacted somewhere in the city during the, the violated hours, doesn't necessarily mean they're in violation. There are a lot of exceptions to this. And I, I feel like the Capel Police Department employs a lot of common sense as well. We don't, we don't, we're not out there trying to rise many tickets as we possibly can. So... Am I doing it wrong? Okay, we're gonna go slideless. Oh, there we go. So the way the ordinance reads, is a minor is anyone in the age of 10 to the age of 16. The reason the number, the age 10 is put in there, because in the state of Texas, the age 10 is where criminal responsibility begins. But for ordinance reasons, if you're under, if you're 16 years of age or younger, you have to abide by the curfew hours. The curfew hours are Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And then on Saturday and Sunday, it's midnight, where it begins at 12:01 to 6:00 AM. So that's, those are the curfew hours. That's what they've been since 2000. I can tell you, as an officer that was working the streets prior to 2000, we really wanted a curfew ordinance. And, and nowadays, we, I've known this for years, this is a very effective ordinance, because we don't come across that many minors after midnight. And I'll show you some of the numbers. So the last three years, these are the number of curfew tickets we've written each year. We found that one in 2019, two in 2020, and then one in 2021. So we're not writing a lot of tickets, because the kids are just, they're not violating the ordinance. And, you know, the ordinance also holds parents responsible. If they allow their child to be out there during the ordinance times, they can be cited. And then if you own an establishment here in town, and you're allowing minors to stay on the premise, you could also receive a citation. That's not happening. And it's because we've had this for so long, and the community's just used to it. And I, just, just to kind of put it in perspective, I pulled the number of arrests for the same three years. These are only arrests of people that were 16 or younger that occurred after midnight. And in 19, we had four. 2020, we had two. Last year, we arrested no one under 16 after midnight. And then you can see what the different violations were. So that's, that's the ordinance. That's the ordinance we've had. That's the numbers. I, I find it to be very effective. I recommend that the council re-adopt this ordinance for another three years. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Mayor Protem?
Chief, thank you for the information, especially the statistics. That's all really good to see. I, I probably missed this, but remind me why 16 is the cutoff and not 17?
I'm sorry. 17 is, in the state of Texas, you're an adult criminally. So if you get arrested at 17, you will be treated like you're 30. A lot of people think it's 18. 18, 17-year-olds can't run away from home, which is what, the confusion part is, but they are adults, and that's why they can't be-
There's no curfew that applies to them, so it's 16 and under?
Right.
And then the other thing, also, just for clarification, if, if anyone who's a minor, so 16 and under, ends up with a violation for curfew, do they have the option to go through teen court? You know, or, or what, I guess what, what happens, for example, is?
That would be up to the judge.
Okay.
I don't know that.
Gotcha.
Probably a whole bunch of things. I don't know specifically.
Okay. I just wasn't sure for the, for the curfew piece on that. Okay. I know. Well, I was just clarifying, because I have children in these age groups. No, all that to say, thank you for that. This is really helpful. And, you know, I, I, how often does this come up for us to review and to reconsider?
Every three years.
Three years, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you said that one citation was given last year, citation, right? But those citations, they're not, I guess, given out easily, right? There's got to be, or is it, is it that they're just given out because they're out, or is it, is there a certain thing that kind of, certain threshold or standard that you would give citation versus warning?
I don't know, I don't know the specifics of that one citation. I will say, generally, when we, we catch some kids out and about, they gen, we will generally just call their parents and come get them. Sometimes, maybe there's other extenuating circumstances that led to the citation. If we don't, our, our philosophy is if we don't feel, if we feel like the problem can be resolved any other way than a citation, like the behavior's going to change, then we'll, we'll give a warning, or we'll just call a parent. If we don't feel like that action is going to resolve the future behavior, then we'll issue the ticket.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hager.
Yeah, just from the prosecutor's standpoint, this also allows the police an opportunity to make contact with the youth, even if they're not doing anything wrong. So if they're 7:11, they're in the parking lot, and it's 12:01, and they're under 16, this gives the police an opportunity to make contact with them, to keep them safe, and to keep them out of trouble. So it has a preventative measure, which otherwise we could not do as a police department or as prosecutor's office. And to answer the question, they get to see the judge. They don't go to teen court for a curfew violation.
So speaking from personal experience, the, the policies of the police department worked very well on a 14-year-old that I happen to know. So it was a very, everything worked out well. So I appreciate the, the, your diligence and just the contact with the, the minors that you come into contact with, because it was, it has been, for, like you said, 20 years, very successful.
Yes.
Counsel, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Did we have anybody sign up to speak as part of the public hearing? All right. Thank you very much. Counsel, any other discussions, or? Councilmember Carol. It's always appropriate.
Thank you, Mayor. My daddy always told me nothing good happens after midnight. Therefore, I would move to approve, I'll close, I've moved to close the public hearing, I moved to approve item number nine.
Have a second from councilmember Neves. All in favor?
Long Inahosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill, all in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much, Chief. Item number 10 is a presentation discussion of proposed changes to the short-term rental ordinance, and Ms. Hurley is ready to go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to discuss proposed changes to our current short-term rental ordinance, and to seek direction from city council before a final ordinance is brought forward for approval, for consideration approval. So before I start, I want to thank Louis Rahill and his code compliance team for all their work on short-term rentals. In addition to their day-to-day work with short-term rentals, they have spent a tremendous amount of time researching ordinances from surrounding communities and communities across the state and some out of, out of state to find best practices in other cities. And then I also want to thank Chief Barton and his team for their work, because they are the boots on the ground that respond to most short-term rental calls. So for simplification purposes, I'll try to use STR from this point forward when referencing short-term rentals. So since the first STR property arrived in Capel, and then the first ordinance was passed in 2018, staff has received numerous calls from the community. Those calls have been a mix of those that support short-term rentals and those that do not. And so just truthfully, the majority have been complaints from neighbors surrounding STR properties. But from the beginning, staff has tried to balance the desires of the residents that want to share their home on an intermittent, intermittent basis, while still providing protection for the neighbors, neighboring properties. The changes I'm proposing tonight are still aimed at maintaining that balance. Staff believes that the proposed changes provide a clear understanding of definitions, processes, and enforcement, so that there's no guessing or subjective opinions for all parties involved. As I stated before, the first ordinance was adopted in 2018. As we've learned more about STR industry and received feedback from the community over the years, changes have been made to the ordinance. And before I present the changes staff is proposing to the current ordinance, I did want to start by outlining the items that are not changing. So what we are keeping the same is that all properties are required to register to get a permit before operating a short-term rental. Applicants must prove the property is their primary residence. A local emergency contact must be provided. An inspection of the residence is scheduled after a permit has been applied for and issued. Sales and lodging taxes must be paid by the owners of an STR. An STR must meet all applicable city and state laws and codes. An STR cannot be used for the sole or primary purpose of having a party venue. All STRs must provide an informational brochure that is given to guests, giving them the rules by which they must abide. And again, these are all the items that are in the current ordinance, and those will remain in the revised ordinance. So now I'll discuss the major proposed changes that, that we're talking about for the revised ordinance. So we'll start by, we've added a number of definitions in order to clear up any confusion about terms that we use throughout the ordinance. STR permit holders will now reapply for a permit on an annual basis, which means an inspection must be completed each time a permit is issued. The revised ordinance clearly outlines what constitutes a violation, and new levels of enforcement have been established for STR properties that have violated the ordinance. The penalty varies from temporary suspension of a permit to permit, permanent revocation of a permit. And the levels of enforcement increases as the frequency and/or severity of the violation increases. And so before I move on to additional changes we're proposing, I want to spend a little time on those varying levels of enforcement. The first level of enforcement occurs when two or more of the following violations happen within a 12-month period and could lead to a permit being suspended for 150 days. Those are an STR operating in violation of building, fire, health, or safety codes. And these are based on an official investigation and determination, and they do have a 10-day period to try to correct those violations. Failure to pay, to file or pay applicable sales and lodging taxes, failure to pay an annual permit application fee, and failure to apply for an STR permit. So once again, two or more of those violations could end up in a, a suspension for 150 days. The next level enforcement occurs when any of the following violations occur and could result in the revocation of a permit for one year. An STR has more than one permit suspension within a 12-month period, false or misleading application materials, continued operation of an STR during a suspension, and any conditions that would have warranted a denial of permit at the time of application. And then the final level enforcement occurs when there's a cumulative total of four or more of the following violations and could result in the permanent revocation of a permit. An STR operating in violation of building, fire, health, or safety codes, and again, they have 10 days to correct those once those are found. Failure to file or pay applicable sales and lodging taxes, failure to pay an annual permit application fee, failure to apply for an STR permit, false or misleading information contained in the application for permit, or operation of an STR during a permit suspension. So again, staff believes that this gives clear guidance on what constitutes a violation that can result in the suspension or revocation of a permit. So now I'll move on to the additional proposed changes. For any STR permit holder that wishes to appeal a denied permit or the suspension or revocation of a permit, they have a 10-day appeal timeline that has been established. And just as before, permit holders will appeal to the Board of Adjustment. And then finally, the annual sunset review has been removed from the ordinance. Staff will continue to monitor changes in the STR industry and issues related to STRs, but there will not be a set date for us to bring back the ordinance for review each year. But with that being said, the ordinance can be revisited at any time, or at any time the city council desires. So once again, tonight is just the presentation of proposed changes. If city council is okay with these proposed changes and advises staff to move forward, we will bring back a final ordinance for approval and for consideration and approval at a later date. And with that, I'm happy to hear any feedback or answer any questions that you will have.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Hurley? Councilmember Neville?
Sorry, thank you so much for the presentation. Question, I think, just to make sure everybody kind of understands the, the violation levels, as you discussed, the level 1, 2, and 3. Is that something where the level 1 violation would happen, and then it would escalate to level 2? Or could you immediately jump to a level 2, depending on the severity of the violation? Just helping us understand what that looks like would be helpful.
Sure. So for the level 2, so while they are cumulative, so the first level has two, two or more violations, and then when we get to level 3, it's repeating a lot of the same violations you found in the first level, but it's a cumulative total of four or more. Level 2 really stands on its own. Those, at any point, if any of those occur, we could revoke a permit, or, yeah, revoke a- a permit for a year.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mindy. Going to the section 9-29, 29-2 regarding the hotel occupancy tax. How long have you had that 7% tax imposed? And does that, is there anything else? Do we do that to any other, collect any other 7% tax from other things?
Yes, sir. So it's been in existence since before I was here, so I don't know the exact date that the 7% was adopted, but I can tell you that it was before we even had any hotels in existence. I started here in 2005, and that was already in place when I started here. And those are, that 7% is applied to all occupancy, so hotels and short-term rentals both pay that occupancy tax rate.
Thank you. And then going to section 9-29-3B8, we're talking about the short-term registration requirement as to the fire extinguisher. Would you kind of explain as to the purpose of this part?
Absolutely. So I did speak to our fire marshal just to make sure, and we do require this of all businesses in town. So even the City of Capel has an independent consultant that comes in and checks our fire extinguishers. So it's for the safety of those that are in an occupied building. And so that is the responsibility of the homeowner to have an independent company come and do that annual inspection on an annual basis.
And that's regardless of whether I do STR or not, correct?
For a home occupation, so just in my home, my fire extinguisher does not have to be inspected, but if you are bringing in people that are not a resident of that home, it does.
Okay, thank you. And then also, the section 9-29-3B9, the agreement to receive acknowledgement, can you kind of elaborate on that purpose of this section as well?
Sure. And I believe we may have left out a word in this, so we'll look at that and make sure we change that. But it's essentially saying that we are making those that are applying for a permit acknowledge that they have received this ordinance, and they know the rules that they must comply to, and in addition to that, that they have to receive an annual inspection.
Has there been an instance where they say, "I did not know," or?
We have, we have not had any that have said that.
But it's a precaution, just to make sure?
Correct.
Okay. And then for section 9-29-8 dot AC, the senior exemption and other exemptions, can you go elaborate on that as well?
Absolutely. So our senior exemption is applied the same way that exemptions are applied to seniors for property taxes or for water and sewer rates. So it's 65 and older that qualify for the exemption. Currently, we don't have any other exemptions, but we have that language in there in the event that City Council wants to adopt, adopt any other exemptions.
So it's like a safety net?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Counsel, any other questions? Well, there's no action taken here, so unless you've got any other questions for us, we're, thank you very much for your time.
So we will bring back, we will bring forward an ordinance for adoption then at a later date for you all.
Do you have an estimate on when that might be?
We were hoping to bring that back in April, so that that would give a meeting for residents to be able to come and speak during citizens' appearance about any opinions or thoughts they have on this. And then after that, then we'll bring it back for consideration and adoption.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is consider approval of an ordinance repealing Chapter 1, Article 1-13, Code of Conduct in its entirety and authorizing the mayor to sign. Mr. Hager?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This is an item that, over the last three months, I have fielded a number of questions from members of this council at meetings. I've been called by members of this council on private consultations. I've consulted with staff, the City Secretary's office, I've consulted with the City Manager's office, and have talked about various issues that we've encountered as a result of the Code of Conduct. When this was originally passed, I was reminded today that Mayor Sheehan was the mayor at the time we approved this ordinance. And thankfully, we've only had to implement its procedures on a couple of occasions over these last 30 years, approximately 30 years. I don't, if Ms. Sheehan's watching, I didn't mean to date either her or me, but one of the things has become abundantly clear to me as your attorney, there's been a number of interpretations, things have changed, a lot of how we function as council members, as citizens, has changed, and it's caused a number of issues with regard to how the Board of Conduct operates. And one of the things cleared to me that if it's this broken, it needs fixed. And so I've recommended to you all that we fix this and revisit this ordinance in its totality. In my experience, it is best if, in this case, is to throw out the old one and start over again. Generally, there are so many questions you all have had about process and about who's on the board and special counsel and how all of those things operate, I think it's best to start over and revisit. A number of things that, that are available to us today were not available to us in the 19, early 1990s as far as social media, our interactions with one another, and how all that transpires, and that needs to be revisited. Instead of trying to fix this boat, I think you need to build a better boat and a new boat. And so when I've talked to you all on a basis, I've suggested to you that we eliminate this ordinance. I've given staff a timetable to do this tonight, to move to two different ways of looking at this. I think one of the things you need to look at is the substance of the ordinance, what conduct is that you want to define as inappropriate for boards and commissions and for you all. And two, the second part of that is the process, and those things to me are separate, and they need your attention in chunks. And so what I propose to City Manager and what I'm proposing to you tonight is to repeal this ordinance tonight, and then I will bring you back what I consider best practices for you to discuss, because this is your policy, not my policy, for you then to define the conduct which you think needs to be governed. Now, what kind of things you find are inappropriate for boards and commissions and for yourself. And once you decide that, then we'll decide on the process to enforce that. And so what I envisioned is do this ordinance tonight, and then by the 22nd of March is to look at the conduct that needs to be reviewed as inappropriate. And then once we've decided that, then look at the process that you want to use to implement. Because at the end of the day, y'all appoint, that's Texas term, y'all. You appoint all these boards and commission members, and they are under your governance. And you need to decide what you feel is appropriate for them to do or not to do that would require them maybe to be disciplined or to answer for their conduct. One of the very significant shortcomings in our current ordinance is that there's no remedy for misconduct. So what are the remedies? Well, the remedies are that you appoint them, you have governance over them, you may remove them. But you may not wish to remove them, you may wish to reprimand them, you may wish to maybe suspend them, or you may wish to have other, some form of discipline. That's a discussion that you have not had up until now. So we didn't have a remedy in the original ordinance, and I know that in a couple of occasions that we have reviewed this ordinance and those that have fallen within the parameters of that ordinance, it always was a struggle to determine what was the appropriate remedy for the wrong that was committed. And there's been a couple of occasions, and they've been in the past, and no one probably in this room other than myself was here when it happened. But they struggled with it then, you've struggled with it recently in looking at this, and this is not directed at Mr. Venkatesharaman despite his feeling different. You've asked me what are the remedies if something did happen unrelated to him, but just what would happen to somebody? And I said, "Well, there's no specific remedy in the ordinance." And those things need to be changed, and those are discussions y'all need to have as the policymakers of the city. And so I would ask that we go ahead and remove this. I don't, I don't think there's any fear that we're going to have a rash of misconduct tomorrow morning when this goes away. You all do a very good job of selecting people, and people in this community have always held their positions with the highest standards, and so it's not been a problem. I don't think the ordinance prohibits it. I remember then Mayor Sheehan and the council at that time felt that it was necessary that we were serious about appointing you, and there ought to be standards for you to follow if you're going to represent the city. So I don't think any of that's changed, but I don't think that this puts us at risk for the six weeks, and I intend to get this done for you as quickly as you're willing to spend the time to work on. So with that, Mayor, I'll entertain any questions if you have any, but if not, the floor belongs to the council.
Councilmember Neville?
Bob, thank you so much for the presentation. I'd like to go ahead and, and go ahead and propose that we approve item 11, consider approval of an ordinance repealing Chapter 1, Article 1 through 13. Oh, that's it. Article 1 through 13.
Mayor, I have a, I actually have a comment coming.
I'm sorry, that's inappropriate. We have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Hill, second. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I do have.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. Don't we have a discussion before we have a motion?
Actually, no. The appropriate method is to have a motion and a second, and then discussion, and then vote.
Okay. Go ahead, John. I'm sorry.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hager, for that presentation, and actually, I've been looking at the Code of Conduct, and there are a number of things that I found to be an issue and that need to be corrected. So I'm glad this has been brought up. Number one, I think the complaint procedure is proper, but the complaint procedure has more than just a procedure. It actually integrates the Code of Conduct, I'm sorry, Conduct Review Board, and as well as Special Counsel Board as well. Now, all of the other boards and commissions are outlined in Chapter 2, except for Special Counsel and Conduct Review Board. All of the other boards, they have articles that has, outlines the rules, regulations, terms, conditions, and so forth, and the expectation. Only Conduct Review Board and the Special Counsel does not have the article, and it's not under the Boards and Commissions Chapter 2, which makes it really difficult for someone who wants to look for it, very hard to find. And so that's, those are issues. And also, if you look at Complaint Procedure Section 1-13-7E, in the flow of the Complaint Procedure, the section E kind of gives you the impression that the reader, to the reader, that the requests for participation from registered voters are actually to be published in the newspaper when the complaint procedure happens, which is not true if you read the entire thing, but it gives that impression. So that's an issue, because we already have a board that we had actually confirmed, but it looks like as if this, if there's a, if there's a procedure in place, that's when you actually select the board members. So I think that there's an issue with that as well. Same thing with Special Counsel. And the biggest problem that I have is Complaint Procedure Section 1-13-7-E specifically states that applicants shall be interviewed in the manner adopted by the city for interviewing of applicants for all boards and commissions. If my recollection is correct, none of the board members were interviewed, and this is a problem. And I believe that we need to also give all of the board members a fair notice as to the rules and regulations and what the city and what as council members expect going forward as a part of boards and commissions. So I think that is called for to make the corrections, and with all due respect to past council members and mayors, this is something that I believe is, that needs to be addressed and corrected, and moving forward so that we are pretty clear that all boards and commissions are combined in one section in Chapter 2 rather than in some other location on a complaint procedures without any articles defining those boards and commissions. So I agree that we should move forward in making corrections to make sure that we're, you know, it's all in line with our Code of Ordinance.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, I have a question for you. You mentioned, so my question is, if we approve this ordinance today, and tomorrow a citizen files a complaint against the staff or a City Council member or a board member, what is the risk that city is going to have without an ordinance in place, a new ordinance in place?
Well, one with staff. The staff is handled through the City Manager's Office, so that's addressed through, this does not affect staff. If there's a complaint under the ordinance, there is no complaint under the ordinance, the ordinance has been repealed. If, depending on what board or commission it is, the matter then belongs to you if there's a complaint. If someone goes out and does something wrong, assuming that you have authority over that board or commission, the matter will come to you and will be brought to your attention for appropriate action. So you still have, by charter, by ordinance, you appoint all these boards, so you have governance over those boards. So now, as far as the council goes, you're subject to being recalled. So that's the remedy that's available for council members if there's a complaint. There's a number of state laws and state statutes that apply to you as elected officials and to officers. Now, officers in that context apply to P&amp;Z members, Board of Adjustment members, members of the Capel Recreational Development Corporation. They're considered officers for certain state statutes involving responsibility as officers. So if it involves them, then they'll have state law that we'll have to deal with.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. For clarification on timing, because you mentioned bringing something back to us on the 22nd of March, which I know is a work session, that's not a council meeting, so then that would be up for discussion at that point, that we would then look to hopefully vote on something for the first meeting in April? Is that what we're?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to suggest to you, that we're trying to get this done in about six to eight weeks. There's to Councilmember John's point, there are some other ordinances that we have in Boards and Commissions where you, various members of the Board of this council have asked me to fix in relationship to that as well, about serving at the pleasure of the council. That's kind of the third component, we can clean that up after we get this done, so. And to Mr. John's point, that's what I anticipate. We'll do the Code of Conduct, and then we'll have a suitable entity, whether you call it a board or commission, that will go into Chapter 2, not in Chapter 1. So it'll go with the rest of the boards.
And then I think that, and then, thank you. And then I think the other thing is just a comment to say, you know, this is an opportunity for us to clean up any discrepancies that we have, and just to make sure that all our boards and commission members understand what is expected. And I know- And I know we had, you know, the mayor and I met with the chairs and the vice chairs of the boards and commissions recently. And one of the things we talked about was, we need to make sure that everybody has a copy, everybody understands, everybody has an opportunity to ask questions. And again, it's just a great opportunity for us to level set. So I agree with the timing and I think this is a good way forward.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, Mr. Hager, so 113 does cover employees, but I guess the way I read it, it actually, it just refers you over to employee handbooks or city manager's office. So there's, I guess, just to clarify, there is no risk by getting rid of this temporarily from an employee standpoint or anything.
Anything that an employee would do if that complaint made its way to either the city secretary or the city manager's office, it would be dealt with through human resources.
Okay. So we're still good there? Okay.
And if we get a complaint that deals to the city secretary or to the mayor or the city manager about one of you all or a board and commission, it'll be referred to this body.
Okay.
Because the rules do still say that you are the final and sole arbiter of the rules and responsibilities that govern this body.
Yeah.
And by charter, you have governance over the all boards and commissions.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying. And I think that makes sense. And I would tend to agree just, well, just for argument's sake, I would argue that there's not even a Conduct Review Board in place by the way you read it, which clearly specifies that we have a difference of interpretation of what the ordinance is and needs to be cleaned up. It needs to be specified. So I would agree that we need to go back at it and clarify all this.
For example, for example, we refer to the board, but the board really doesn't even exist until there's a complaint and a process as to what Mr. John was referring to.
Right.
The board's embedded really in the complaint process and really doesn't get constituted until there's a complaint.
Right.
So it's really just an appointment of individuals that have the potential to be appointed to a board given a complaint.
Right.
So, and that's kind of awkward. And maybe we would have found out that shortcoming earlier on had we had to implement this. Thankfully, we haven't, so.
And there is, of course, a dealing, I guess, just over time, the way councils in the past have just dealt with all these different boards. And I think it does make sense that we just need to clarify exactly what we intend here.
Please.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to follow what you said, this is so that we could be consistent with other boards and their, I guess, the articles that's been in place, that we want to make sure this, these boards are also in line with, just like the other boards and commissions.
Yes, and I've taken some of the comments that you've made to me as well as other members of the council. They want everyone, all the boards to be treated the same. And so that's part of this process as well.
Councilmember Matthew.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One more question for you, Bob. Currently, we don't interview candidates specifically for Code of Conduct Board, which is inconsistent with what we do for other boards. Do you know why that became the norm?
I think at one time they were interviewed. And they, we've been consistently inconsistent over the years about how you as a body, the city secretary has every time a new council comes and the appointments come, he or she who is ever either the manager's office to the city secretary says, how do you want us to handle the appointments? And you say, well, we've had the same people on this board for 10 years. We don't have any new. Why waste our time and their time bringing them in for an interview? So you've been inconsistent in how you've treated that. We hope to clean this up. Because at one time, I do recall that they did interview people to put on the board.
Oh, we did. Okay. Thank you.
And then sometimes we didn't because there didn't seem to be any interest when the applications came out. And so the city secretary said, we got the same five people or 10 people that have reapplied for this board or commission. And everyone around the horse, you said, you know what? We know all them. We've interviewed them before. We don't want to interview them again. And maybe that's, and I don't want to say get lazy, but we get complacent maybe. So we want to change that process so it's required.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to clarify, all other boards, if we're seeing same applicants, we still do interview. That's correct? So this will be no different from all other boards that we're interviewing, even if it's the same person applying for the same position when they're up for reappointment?
Whether you call them boards, commission, or council appointees, you probably all ought to treat them like.
And just to add into Mayor Protim Hinojosa Smith's comment, we did meet with, Sheehan and I did meet with the board, the chairs and vice chairs of all the boards and commissions several weeks ago. And one of the asks that we made of our staff liaisons was to pass out the Code of Conduct and the charters for each one of the groups. And I've seen a couple of the groups already having, have done that. So that is already, it is occurring and is continuing to occur. Mayor Protim.
And just to answer, Councilmember Matthew, there was a time, in my time on council, there was a time when both Special Counsel and Conduct Review was interviewed. And it has shifted from time to time, just for a variety of reasons, where council has made decisions on, for different reasons. Like for Special Counsel, it's, you know, everybody who is a licensed attorney can be on there. And so we can have a pool of people to choose from. Same thing for the Conduct Review, as having a pool of people. But it has varied from council to council for different reasons. But there was a time when we used to interview them. And I think that's where we're trying to get to, is just being consistent across the board. And then also level setting to make sure that everybody understands our Code of Conduct because we're always putting that out there and we need to make sure that people do understand what that means and what the expectations are as representatives of our city.
Council, we do have a motion and a second. The question on the table is to consider approval of an ordinance repealing Chapter 1, Article 1-13, Code of Conduct in its entirety and authorizing the mayor to sign. All in favor?
Long and Hinojosa Smith, Carol Nevels, John Matthew Hill, all in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12 is our city manager reports project updates and future agendas.
In case y'all haven't heard, stay away from South Belt Line. Just a couple of updates. First of all, the wagon wheel tank rehab, our contractor began sandblasting the interior of the tank this past Saturday. We've talked a little bit about the supply chain challenges. The Village Parkway backup generator, as you know, we're refurbishing Village Parkway. And we've received an update that the generator will be delivered in December. So that just gives you an idea of what it's like on the supply chain. As far as Belt Line is concerned, our contractor is planning on switching traffic next week. The contractor is going to be striping new lanes on Monday with work beginning on Tuesday, weather permitting. What's going to happen is they're going to limit traffic to one lane in each direction on the inside lanes while they complete the striping work. Once that is completed and the switch is made to the northbound lanes, this will allow the configuration for the duration of Phase 1, at which point then it'll be switched over to the southbound lanes. So we are encouraging anyone that does not need to use Belt Line to choose an alternate route. Highway 121, President George Bush, Freeport, MacArthur, Royal, there are alternatives to South Belt Line. And then as far as just an update on our utility billing systems, so we told you a couple of weeks ago about the processes continuing on bills have been generated in both the old billing system software and the new billing software, as well as a third outside of the system. All three systems have been reconciled and the bills have been posted in munis. Customers who have signed up for the CSS portal can see the amount of their bill. However, we are still getting an error message on trying to email the bills to the customers. So staff and Tyler are continuing to work to resolve that area, error. Once that's been resolved, the billing file will be sent to the printer for mailing. And again, we do not want to send out the bills to customers and some customers and not others. Remember that there are no penalties or disconnection service fees will be occurring during February and March. To date, 2015 customers have signed up for the CSS portal. Since every customer who signs up needs their customer ID, we're actually talking to each of our customers either through a conversation or email. Just an interesting kind of update on the kiosk out front, we had 481 customers use the kiosk in January. And I love that you threw in this fun fact. Fun fact, the kiosk tracks how long it takes someone to process a payment. The record for quickest time is 40 seconds and the longest time has been seven minutes. So there progress continues to be made, Mayor. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir. Item number 13, Mayor and Council reports. Town center is a polling location, as you can probably tell, for the Republican and Democratic Party primary elections. Early voting continues until Friday, February 25th. The poll will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And Election Day is a week from today, Tuesday, March 1st, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then there will be a memorial service for Caitlin Rogers on Friday, February 25th, at 5:00 p.m. at the Capel Arts Center, Performing Arts Center. Then after the service, the request is that people will walk on over to George's Coffee Shop. Item number 14, Council Committee reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. Item A, Councilmember Carroll on the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition.
Well, thank you, Mayor. For the last couple of months, there's been a lot of focus clearly on infrastructure bills that are moving through different levels of government and to see how those, how those all sort of sift out, how much money Texas will get. It's thought we potentially will get an outsized portion of those bills. So that's, that is good news. But in general, there's a continued reminder that we, the state in general, all the different communities have to have projects ready to go. So when funding does become available, we don't, the different communities don't lose their place in line. There's a lot of focus on what they call the multimodal approach to infrastructure. You sort of look at the neighborhood and then you look at the region and then you look even at international, international level. And there is a lot of focus on all the legislation sort of taking this approach to it. That is really going to be crucial because if you look at the stats, we are growing about a million people in the, in the metroplex every eight years. So in the next 25 years, we're going to go up three to three and a half million people. We're going to have 11 and a half million people here. And transportation will continue to be an enormous focus at that point. The North Texas communities over the last 15 years have really spent a lot of time trying to re-nit a lot of the communities that had been broken up through actually infrastructure projects over time, whether that be highways or other infrastructure projects. But really trying to re-nit those communities, really looking at this multimodal approach to transportation. And we're, we think that we're really in a good position from, based on what we've done over the last 15 years for the future of these projects. So just to give you a little bit of perspective to wrap up my report is, the next 10 projects in the state have a cost of about $9.6 billion. Only about $7.1 billion of that is actually funded at the moment. The rest is waiting to be funded and it's looking, you know, more and more optimistic that we will get the funding, but it's very, that just shows you how crucial it is to have, that the communities need to have these projects ready to go, that when the funding does show up, they can, they don't lose their place in line and they can just get the, get that project started. So with that, I will yield to the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Item B is a report on the Woven Health Clinic. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. The director of Woven wants to give a big thanks to the city of Capel for helping the clinic by giving them a portion of the city's American Rescue Funds due to the end of waiver 1115 funding, which provided Woven with stable funding for the past 10 years. And the state legislature changing new loan income funding so only hospital-owned clinics are eligible. Capel's funding will help them to continue serving patients as they put together new funding methods for the future. In 2021, Woven held six COVID vaccine clinics and vaccinated over 1,000 low-income adults. They continue to offer COVID tests and COVID care kits to patients and other nonprofit The clinic is now restarting their onsite health events such as healthy cooking classes and exercise classes, which had been suspended earlier in the pandemic. Their patients are still struggling with depression and anxiety due to the pandemic. And the number of new diagnoses were up 200% in the time from December to January. In 2021, the clinic received an award from the American Heart Association for the excellence in treating hypertension. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item C is a report on Metrocrest Services. Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to report some stats from the Metrocrest Service from October 1st, 2021 to January 31st, 2022. The Capel residents utilized the facility, the Metrocrest facility, 375 visits to the food pantry by the Capel residents, 98 meals delivered to the seniors in Capel, and 115 individuals utilized workforce service, 78 individuals received housing assistance from the Metrocrest Service. Just want to give you an update on the new building they are building in Carrollton. They demoed the existing structure, which is an old church there, which happened on the February 17th week. And actual construction will begin in March for the new building and expected completion date is April 2023. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Exciting time at Metrocrest. Item D is a report on Capel seniors. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Meeting with the seniors happens every last Wednesday of the month and on January 22nd, meet with seniors. And there will be another meeting tomorrow, which is the last week of the month, at 11:30. They are inviting any one of you if you'd like to be there. And last month, Councilmember Matthew also joined and the seniors really appreciated his presence, input and for answering some of the questions. There were about 25 to 30 seniors in attendance and they, some of them start bringing their lunch and they're very motivated about having meetings with food. They've asked, they've asked questions about some of the water and sewer rates and they would like to see changes in the water bill rate, winter rate, especially for those on a fixed income. The seniors were also very excited about hearing about the foreboard research and finding and they're looking forward to hearing more about the village model with volunteers and services for seniors. There were a number of seniors that I've actually asked for a number of things. And the first one was the pickleball. My understanding is that they, I've been told that they were allowed to have some pickleball at the senior center at some point, but now it's not available at this time. So they want to see if that's possible. They understand that Wagon Wheel Center does have, Tennis Center has pickleball, but that is outside and some of the seniors are not really able to go outside and play that. Number two, the bingo, they have had more bingles in the past, but currently they only have one bingo a month. And the seniors feel that this bingo, it does actually bring a lot of seniors together and they really enjoy being together. They win $8 if they win the bingo, but that's really not the point. So they really like to see if the bingo expansion on that. The third, they want to see if the city would look into the lunch meal meeting. Surrounding cities have, surrounding cities do provide meals at a discount price, whether it be from some of the restaurants actually providing some food or them doing the kitchen, cooking in the kitchen that's at the senior center. They would like to see if that's possible with the options of them cooking for the seniors to bring in more seniors to have more meetings together. Number four, they asked about the parade. They love Capel Parade, but they've seen a number of parades in other cities where they have more participants, especially like middle school band participation, whether it be the band, whether it be the middle school that's not participating, but they were just wondering if Capel could actually match some of the parades that's been happening in other cities where, with longer parades. And number five... And number five, they asked about the weekend usage. I didn't realize the senior center was actually closed on weekend, but they also talked about, a lot of the seniors are able to meet on the weekends, and if that's even a possibility, they would like to see if the city would look into that. And then number six, the seniors talked about how they would like to see if they could receive information, updates more from the city staff. They do appreciate meeting monthly with the city council, but at the same time, they want to see if they could meet or get the information sooner from the city staff if that's, you know, possible. They understand that this has to work two ways, and that staff, you know, they do understand that staff has commitments to provide events and also updates, and they're willing to do that. But overall, they're really looking forward to expanding some of the programs, so they want to go back to what it was before pandemic situation, and they want to be able to meet and greet and have more events at the senior center. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item E is report on the Historical Society by Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. The last council, or the last meeting of the society was on February the 12th. Who was there? Two council members, myself and Bijou. Bijou picked up a bit of information. There was a discussion about the, there was a discussion about the postmaster, it was one of the previous postmasters that gave the presentation, and a little history of the post office here. And Bijou made a copy of the, of the, the postmasters that Capel has had since its inception. So he wanted to read it, and I said, no, you're not going to read it to, you know, tonight, but he's got that information available if you're curious as to the names of the postmasters in Capel since inception. So I thought that was interesting. Formal, former city manager, Kelly Phillips and his wife Terry were there. Terry worked for the post office for a long time. I did not know that, that was news to me. So she, for a number of years, she was involved with the post office. Former postmaster, and I can't recall her name, can you, Bijou, since you want to talk, maybe, maybe you can tell the group what her name was? I don't remember either.
The person made the presentation?
Yeah.
She was a postmaster?
Well, I understand. I didn't ask that. I asked, what was her name?
Virginia Ware.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was the one that was there, and she was there from the mid-'80s into the early-'90s.
1977.
Right. Thanks for the help, Bijou. The, there were several other guests, of course, in a room full of society members. What's the, now that we got that out of the way, what, what's the work, we'll get down to the nuts and bolts here, what are they doing? They're just not meeting, you know, and shaking hands and having tea and going home. Monthly craft classes, making items used by people living in the early and mid-20th century is something that they have begun and are going to have them monthly. They are working on a, developing a virtual tour of the park and the structures, adding social media components to the live facility tours that we have now. We, the society, I've got Ken folks in the society, so, yeah, it's E. The park's now open every Saturday for visitors, expanding the opening from the former one Saturday a month, so it's now there, it's opened every Saturday. The gift shop is being, our gift shop is being planned for the Minyard Store. Initial items for sale will be handmade, local and vintage items prepared or built or made by the members. Additional merchandise will obviously be added over time, but it'll all be local stuff. Mayor? I'm out of words.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You lightened up the evening. All right. Item number 15 is public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Counsel, do we have any PSAs for this evening? Just a reminder of the memorial service on Friday, and other than that, there was, item number 16, there was no action from executive session since we did not have one. Therefore, there being no further business before the council, we are adjourned at 8:56 p.m.